It's seven o'clock, so let's get started. I know we have lots to do. Appreciate continued interest in all things zoning, so thank you for coming. Call to order, appointment of alternates. So who's not here today?
Derek.
Derek. Derek, so we'll, I think it's Mike's turn, so we'll seat Mike for Derek. And otherwise, we have a full, huh? We have a full commission, all right? I did look at the minutes. Anyone have any substantive comments?
I have five or 10. Mostly typos. Line 74, there's an "and" that should be "an," A-N.
Okay.
Line 86, there's a "site" that's S-I-T-E that should be C-I-T-E. Line 104, there's an "approved" that should be not the past, should be approved. Line 143, word framework is one word. Line 346, "borders" is B-O-R-D-E-R, D-E-R-S, no A in it. That's all.
Okay.
Can you repeat the very first one you said?
Let's give her the marked copy.
Marked copy.
Okay, so nothing of substance there. Anyone else have anything? So we'll adopt the minutes as submitted. We have a couple of consent items that we want to run through quickly. Hiram, you want to speak to these?
Sure. First one, Mr. Chairman, is absolutely sign application for Attilio's, the exact replacement sign for what was previously there. Second one is, again, a replacement sign, stop and shop. It's a replacement of a placard sign on the face of the existing, front the size of that building. Again, same exact size, same location, no change in regulations, no change in staff recommendation, is that they're both acceptable.
Are they taking out the natural food you're putting in a hospital?
Yes. I think a little less than that, but...
Okay, so these seem fine. I would be looking for, unless anybody has any objection, these will be approved. All in favor say aye. On the consent agenda, that's fine. I'm going to make a suggestion that we amend the agenda to try to deal with as much as we can, so that we leave time for the 155 Hot Meadow Street. So I would skip over to item six. Well, let's see, hang on a second. So we have, we'll do the public hearings. How do we have to do this?
We need to change the agenda.
All right, so somebody move that we change the agenda to match what Chairman Palmeroy wants to do.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye, all right. So let's take care of number three on the public hearings. Mr. Morecki will recuse himself, and your spokesperson can speak to application 14-28, 14-29. Is your spokesperson here?
In the meantime, Ms. Chairman, just let me tell you that the planning commission considered this application at its last meeting and recommended unanimously, recommended approval for this application.
Okay.
Mr. Korea is going to make a presentation.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for taking this early also. Sure, it's C-O-R-R-E-I-A. Rich Korea. Okay.
Magic.
10 Station Street. My business address. I'm a commercial real estate broker in town, and I've been marketing these properties over the years. And as we looked at it, and trying to find a, you know, looking for tenants to come in over here, we went to the property owner and suggested that we look at unifying the zone with the rest of the street. The first two buildings are zoned PO, which is professional office. The third building up, Jersey X, is zoned R-15. And then you get into a B-2 district with the school buses and where you get your hair cut in that area. And as we, as I, as I look at it, when we go for a PO zone that allows professional office and nothing else. So if somebody had like a business they wanted to have on the first floor and have a little apartment upstairs, they can't do that in the PO zone. So, you know, I said, well, if we can't jump over somebody else's property to do this, we spoke to Jersey, and he said, sure, go ahead, you know, as long as it doesn't cost him anything to do the zone change, he'll be happy with it. It would also help unify that section of the street. Some of the times when we're out looking at property and we go down West Street, there's a I-2 zone next door at the, with the restaurant, and then across the street you have a PO, then across the street you have an R-25 and an R-15, and you have all these different zones in a half mile stretch of road. This would give some unification to West Street, and we hope that you would consider that. If you have any specific questions, we can get into that, but it's really, it's really more of giving these property owners some flexibility to adjust to the market as to what is rentable and what isn't rentable.
All right. And is there a reason, any reason we shouldn't do this? Hiram from...
Staff recommends that we, in fact, unify the zone along that stretch of road. Makes sense to us, and we explained to planning commission the same thing, and they were in agreement with that as well. Doesn't conflict with the plan of conservation development. We recommend that it makes sense.
All right, any questions?
Are we going to pull the hearing into two applications?
Yes. As I understand it, some of the properties are owned by Mr. Morecki, and some, one property he has a right of personal refusal and represents them.
Correct.
Two separate applications, because two separate owners with the same essential.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We technically, well, let's see, so the next, so that public hearing was open. We should close it?
Any comments from the public?
Oh, any comments from the public? Thank you. It is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to properties on West Street being converted from PO to B-2? Hearing none, I look for a motion to close the public...
These are on the north side of West Street?
These are on the south side of West Street. Between the Griss Mill and...
South side.
So between movement and second, we close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Who moved the second?
I'm not sure.
Did anybody second it?
You moved.
I moved it.
All right, great. Application number 1433 of Malika... Boy, help me. Malika here?
Yes.
Please use the microphone. We are being recorded.
How are you?
We're good. So can you just briefly summarize what you're asking for?
Yeah, I'm asking for, to sell wine and beer. I mean, permit selling wine and beer. My location, in Bennys.
All right.
Say your name.
My name is Benny.
Benny.
That's not what it says.
Yes.
Not here pronounced.
Go with that.
Malika de Vallen.
Vallen, okay.
So, it's pretty hard, but...
Okay, so this is an application for permit to sell beer and wine. Special permit required for a restaurant. Staff did a report on this. You want to summarize that for us? Hiram?
There are other, this building, butts actually, a package store, and there are other restaurants in the area. Doesn't appear to be out of character with the areas in a commercial area. There don't appear to be any other substantial concentrations of residential concentration area will be adversely affected.
Thank you. Anyone, any questions from the commissioners for Benny?
I would be opposed to it until the applicant could get some recognition of our internal lit sign.
We were going to, yeah, we're going to get to that. Okay, that's fine. That's a valid comment. So there have been issues with your sign, Benny, as it relates to not being in compliance with the sign, internally lit sign?
No.
Hiram?
Correct, we've talked about that for a long time. We have a resolved...
Have we done anything as an action against that? Have we asked it be taken down or not?
No, Mike Glidden has actually been talking to him for a while, and I don't know if any resolution of that has been, has there been any back and forth with regard to...
Nobody, I don't know. I mean, nobody told me about nothing. We haven't hear that soon. I mean, it's approved everything first time.
This is an uncomfortable situation, because it's in the staff report on this that there have been issues relative to this, but it doesn't sound like we've actually issued any kind of order or request or...
There were, there were a number of variants as it went back and forth a couple of years ago, Mr. Chairman, and there was unresolved, issues were unresolved. Should you decide to close the hearing tonight, you may want to hold up on afternoon on this until you get that resolved.
All right. Any other questions for Benny from the commissioners? Anyone here to speak from the public to the application for beer and wine license for Benny's restaurant? All right, seeing none, I would be looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Dave Ryan moves. I'll second. Gray seconds. All in favor say aye. Aye, so the public hearing is closed. I would further, continuing my agenda amendment, now ask that we vote on these three applications before we move back to the public hearing that's open. So I'll ask Vaughn to recuse himself again. Yeah. Pay attention though, this won't take long. All right, so we're going to first consider application 1428 and 1429 together. Any discussion on this?
Move we approve him?
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Jerry Post. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, that's moved. Second, I'd like to look at application 14-33, Benny, as it relates to the beer and wine license. Looking for a motion and then discussion.
Move we approve his application 1433?
I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
We make it pending the resolution of the outstanding zoning issues.
The problem is, I don't think there are any. That's, I don't think there is a request that hasn't been answered. I think there's dialogue, but I don't think that there is. That's the difficulty here, so...
But we certainly, I certainly will tell the commission this evening that we'll talk to Mike tomorrow about that, and we'll get it. If there's any issues unresolved, I'll get them, get to the bottom of it.
I mean, I think it's a great idea for the guy to have a beer and wine license. I just don't like the idea that someone can get a zone change while there's still outstanding issues.
Okay, well, this isn't a zone change. This is just for the...
This is a special, this is a special permit for the beer and wine.
I understand.
I don't think we should hold the guy's business hostage to the disagreement over whether a string of lights is internally lit or not.
Or art.
Or art.
Or artwork.
Or whatever. You know, I think that the staff hasn't resolved that.
Yeah, the staff has a responsibility to either make a direct request and state that it's in violation and, and ask for it to be fixed, or let it go.
I mean, the staff has been incompetent in this for the last two years, so, you know, I don't, I don't feel any reason that that would get me better.
As we sit here tonight, we don't know that there is a violation that needs to be fixed. That's the problem. There's a mention of it in a memo, that's all. I think that's the problem. The problem is, there hasn't been a demand for it to be removed. Has there? Hiram, did we know?
No, not that I know.
All right. I agree with Dave. I think we should go ahead and approve this permit. You're welcome to vote however you'd like, Ned. But I also will, will strongly request that the staff compliance officer speak to Mr. Benny and state whether the sign is in violation or not, and what needs to be done, or drop it and let us know that it's not an issue, and report back at the next meeting.
Now you're aware of it, so you can get in front of your own electrician, right? So probably can act on that pretty quickly.
Just to be clear, the memo references the temporary sign ordinance, and that may have to do with the A-frame sign that's displayed there more frequently than, than not, so just, this one, be clear, that's what...
Okay. All right, so it's been moved and seconded?
I consider that the internally lit sign, not the A-frame sign.
But that's not even mentioned. What is mentioned is the little sandwich board sign.
If you drive down the road and the bridge is missing, I don't think you have to send a report to someone. The bridge is missing. I mean, it's an internally lit sign. It's obvious to even the casual observer.
All right, I'm going to call for the vote. Motion and second on the floor. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Let the minutes show though, that we want the discussion that's referenced in the memo cleared up to our satisfaction at the next meeting. Does not stop his ability to get this on that beer and wine. Okay.
Then also, we'd like to hear with determination of whether that sign is an internally lit legal sign or not.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
While we're off our agenda, thank you, guys. Thank you, Zach. Let's deal with the possible action on agenda items in number six. Application 1426 of 121 West Street LLC for site plan amendment on the property located at 121 West Street, Zone I-2.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution of a longstanding issue with regard to the property at Salters. The matter is, in the process of being resolved, it told the engineer that they didn't need to come this evening, but I just wanted to let you know that we've received the, the application. They're simply repaving that driveway and doing some test wells in that property right now.
Yeah, so that's basically what that is. There's, they'll be back at some point in the near future to resolve that, but what they were hoping to do was to get the commission's permission to go ahead, along with the plans they've been working with the DEP and environmental consultant, end-to-end staff as well, before Howard left, to try to get this resolved. So there's really nothing else, other than paving the existing driveway that the commission would be looking at.
This is at Salters, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
What does the application entail?
Paving the driveway, Dave, it's a site, basically a site plan amendment.
So it's a site plan amendment, which says that they's going to put, is going to pave part of the existing, and is it materially different in size or...
No.
...shape or anything else?
No, there, there were some drainage issues with regard to a culvert that was there. They've been given permission from the Conservation Commission, working through their environmental consultant, to close that up, to make sure that it doesn't increase. There was an issue, if you recall, that the pond downstream that went into the West Street development had a sheen on it. The attempt to determine where that came from was part of this whole process as well. So they're doing their best to resolve that and make sure that that doesn't continue, and that it's not coming from this property. So in addition to the monitoring wells that are in place right now, it'll be simply paving the driveway at the same size that was previously located there. That's what they're looking for their approval for.
I still don't understand why they have to come to us. They're paving the same space that they already have paved.
It's currently a gravel drive. They're creating additional impervious area. If we didn't come here...
That's it, that's the reason.
That's my question.
Yeah.
They're increasing the coverage?
No, they, they have approval to pave the driveway the same size that it currently is.
So any other questions for Hiram? All right, so I'd be looking for a motion on this topic.
Move we approve 1426?
I'll second. Seconded by Mr. Gray. All in favor say aye. All right, next up is application 1427. TJ Donahue, Killian and Donahue, as agent for the Simsbury Historical Society, Inc., owner, site plan amendment for the proposed memorial for Martin Luther King in Connecticut. Property located in Hot Meadow Street, zoned SC-1 and SC-3, and I think Mr. Gray has to recuse himself because of his role in the historical society. Mr. Donahue.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I represent the Simsbury Historical Society and the kids who are building the Martin Luther King in Connecticut Memorial. You have in your packet, I'm sure the minutes from the design review board of June 2nd, 2014, they did a thorough review. We had a unanimous approval. You also have plans of the monument in your packet. The monument will be at the southwest corner of the historical society property, adjacent to the red schoolhouse on the corner there that's going to, that's now going to be moved under the plan. And it's going to be constituted of a brick patio, paper area, a walkway in. It's going to have several benches, which will sit either way, both facing the historical society and toward the plaques. And there will be five structures, which will be glass panels, this high and this wide. They will contain five frames of text. The text will talk about Martin Luther King and his time in Simsbury. The first text will be, will state that he stayed, lived at Simsbury for the summers of '44 and '47 and worked on tobacco with other Morehouse students. The second story will highlight some of the letters that he wrote home about how important it was, and will contain the quote, "We went to church on Sunday in Simsbury. We were the only Negroes there. Negroes and whites go to the same church here." And then it was in his letters home that he also said that he emerged as a leader of his group, and that being that he was the, the religious leader of their group, and he had to speak on text every Sunday to 107 boys. Finally, he remarked in a letter home that he had to experience segregation when he got to Washington DC and had to get on the car where the whites and blacks were separated to go back home to Georgia, and that made a significant impact on him. This all follows from the movie that the kids did several years ago. It's a fantastic project, and we'll answer any questions, but we're very hopeful you'll support that.
You're still moving the schoolhouse back to make room for this? That's still part of the project?
This, the application before you is to do that. We're in discussions now with our contractor. The condition of the schoolhouse isn't as good as it could be, and we're either going to move it or not move it. I mean, but the monument, the memorial will be exactly the same. It just might move 20 feet in the center.
Might be somewhere else, all right.
20 feet back.
How's the fundraising going?
The fundraising is nearly at an end. We're, we're at about 80,000, and we need about 100, and we know where we're going to find the rest.
All right.
But we'd be very pleased if anybody wants to...
Where's the historical society?
The historical society? The historical society's on Hot Meadow Street, across from Methodist Church, between Phelps Lane and Andy Supermarket.
Oh, oh, okay, that's it. All right.
Hysterical society.
Seriously, Ned?
Some people have called it that.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Donahue? So I'd be looking for a motion on this.
All right, I'll move, approve, application 1427.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, so approved. Next up, application 1435 of Christopher Mallard, Phase Zero Design applicant, Mitchell Auto Group. Owner proposed exterior renovations to Mitchell Auto Mall on the property located at 416
Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Mallard from Phase Zero Design. Here on behalf of Mitchell Auto Group. Mitchell has been approached by the franchise to start renovating their building. Basically, they're at risk of losing the franchise if they don't start complying with the prototype requirements of the Chrysler dealership and, excuse me, and as well as Jeep and Dodge, which are the other vehicles that they are selling on their site. Basically, our renovations to the building include adding this new Millennium Tower, as Chrysler likes to call it, and the existing building would stay intact. We're proposing to basically re-curf this or clean up the exterior fascia that's on there now, add some additional paints to kind of, to make the fascia pop a little bit more, because right now it's just a dull gray color. The tower is approximately, approximately 18 feet wide, three feet deep, and it stands only three feet taller than the existing parapet of the building. In addition to these renovations, they're also looking to do new signage on the building. Right now, there is no signage on, on the building. There's also a non-compliance monument sign that sits in front of the building. So they'll be removing the non-compliant signage, putting in a new monument sign that complies with the allowable square footage. There'll be a brick base, the brick would match the existing building, the brick that's on the existing building now. And the, the materials of the sign would be an aluminum material, halo lit, which complies with the Dodge Jeep prototype. There would be no, no backup sign. I brought a couple of other drawings too, maybe, just to help you kind of understand how it looks in plan. This is the existing Dodge showroom. Basically, this little rectangle at the front of the page, the bottom of the page is the new monument, I'm sorry, the new Millennium Tower. Interiors, as long as, along with this whole renovation of the exterior, they're going to be doing an interiors package as well to, again, kind of modernize the interior of the building. This is a site plan. Again, the Dodge showroom sits over here in relationship to the rest of the Mitchell complex. There's Saban there and Volvo dealership, and then also their service buildings. Currently, there's three monument signs on site. This one, which is the one we're going to replace. The other two are planning on leaving in place as they are. We're not, we're not touching that. And like I said, the, the square footage of the sign, we calculated to 29.2 square feet for the monument sign, and the building mounted sign, I believe, was 27 square feet. These images here, just two dimensional renderings of the existing building. Again, you can kind of see the repainting the existing facade in the building, this new brick arch.
What's the lighting on the, on the sign on the...
Excuse me?
What's the lighting for the sign on the...
On the building? There, this would be halo lit. And this last page is just a, a blow up of the sign. Basically, you can see the detail on the sign. Again, this brick would match the, the brick that's on the arch, which also matches the brick that's on the building now, so it all looks like it's been built together. We'd add an accent...
Is that sign moving?
Excuse me?
Where it's designed for.
Well, there's signage on the arch.
Sign, the other one.
Right out in front.
In front.
Where the other one was?
Exactly, yeah, they'd replace it. There'd be an accent color to the brick, all the new aluminum storefront would match the building that's there now. And then as far as the signage, we would have a four foot perimeter of planting around the sign, some low, low cover in the sign. Height, trying to remember the height, is, it's less than 10 feet. I believe, I believe it's right at 10 feet.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is that a favorable review from the design review board?
It did, in fact, Mr. Chairman. What they also noted was that the sign package, that the alternative sign package that was presented was not acceptable to them, was not going to be approved by them, or recommended for approval by them, and this package was in fact approved by them. They wanted that to be...
It's a tone bound version of the standard Chrysler book.
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments, discussion among the votes? I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move, we approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Aye? Opposed? All right. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then last, before we get back to 155 Hot Meadow Street, is application 1436 of Thomas J. Donahue Jr., applicant for 16 Albany Turnpike LLC, owner, for a site plan amendment for a proposed bank on the property located at 16 Albany Turnpike, Zone B-3.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you, and thank you, audience, for allowing us to get these shorter items through. For that reason, I'll be very, very brief. Mark Aragonis here from My Long Room there, the LSA, the engineers on the job.
Aragoni is here from Mylone Midroom. They're the LSA, the engineers on the job. I'm going to run through it. I know that members of the zoning commission had the advantage of seeing this was presented to Design Review tonight, so I'll just go through it quickly and answer any questions that you want. This is the old BPRCO station that, 1987, was found to be a polluted site, and it's a dirty site that's now being adaptively reused. Three years ago, it came up for auction. The Hoffman family, who's made such an investment around this, bought the site because they didn't want it floating out there with the challenging use it could have. And they worked hard to plan and design something. What's proposed now is a 2,500-square-foot, single-story Berkshire bank on the site. When we did our first talks with the town and with the state, they both were very affirmed that they did not want new curb, the existing curb cuts to be reopened back out onto the street. And so what happened was, we got in a negotiation with McDonald's, and we came up with a system of easements that would allow, they use our easement here to go west. This would be the sole easement in and out of the bank building, so that there would be no new curb cuts onto, onto Route 44 or Bushy Hill Road. We have been to the Zoning Board of Appeals because McDonald's demand was that the building be situated, if they were going to make that concession, the building be situated so that their view lines would not be blocked from, from this lane of Route 44 going west. And in fact, that's how we decided this 2,500 square foot building. The, this is a subdivision revision, this is a revision of a site plan, and I think Mark has the existing site plan. This represents the existing site plan in our land records, which shows what was here before it was taken down. It was 80% lot coverage, and it had wide-open pavement out into Route 44. So that's what it looked like before. I suppose some could have made an argument that that's what you were entitled to build, but that's not what we did. We went with the other plan. The, it's, if you briefly go through the quick highlights of the.
Sure, in a minute or less.
I can tell where people are.
As TJ mentioned, and for the record, Mark Aragoni, licensed landscape architect, State of Connecticut.
Can you spell your name?
A-R-I-G-O-N-I, and principal with the firm of Mylone and Midroom. As TJ mentioned, half an acre parcel access is going to come off of the existing one-way-in, which would be for traffic heading southbound on Bushy Hill. Main access, point of access at signalized intersection there. And again, no, no modifications proposed there. No modifications proposed to the out and in for McDonald's, which is off of 44, unsignaled. And unsignaled one-way-in here, very difficult corner, if we all, all are very familiar with it. Basically, the lane is a 24-foot aisle, 20-foot aisle around the back. The drive-through, after much consideration and discussion with McDonald's and how the building was going to be situated, the drive-through falls on the western side of the building. It will have one drive-through serviced off of the building, and then one remote off of the middle pier stanchion for the overhead support. So those are the two drive-through lanes with a pass lane on the outside. So if those drive-through lanes have cars in them, there's still a 10-foot to 11-foot pass lane around the outside. There are 16 parking spaces proposed, two handicaps. One of those handicaps is a van space with a little bit different dimensions. The landscaping that's proposed is very minimal, foundation, low-height foundation plants around the building, with the potential to do some annual planting, maybe some perennial plantings, sort of emulate what's going on outside on the bank along 44 that McDonald's has currently. And then on the plan, there is a very low-height stone concrete, details to be determined, low-height wall out in front that has been discussions that that may be an entry cemetery sign. Again, small little package, no circulation, no curb cuts onto Bushy or 44, and utilizing the three points of access that exist out there right now.
Quick question on the parking lot. So coming in off of 44, not up by Kaufman, but the front end of the town. Where you pull in? So you've got to go through, cross over the one-way coming on the right, go around, you know people are going to try to cut through. Is there any way to make that a two-way going through there? Because it's not enough room.
Two-way going through here?
Yeah.
Yeah, because of the angled parking spaces that are in here, you would have to really expand that width. And the other thing what we don't want to do is, by making that two-way, you're asking for a head-on collision.
Yeah.
Somebody coming in from here. You know, the flow going into McDonald's historically is, you know, you come to this point. You come to this point, and you come around the corner. So really, you're going to come to this point, and you're going to now have the choice to go left or right. Right now, very few people go right. Very few, if you all know this parking lot. I mean, this is a good place to meet, meet somebody if you're going to go Kaufman or Fisher and leave your car there for the day. But, you know, very underutilized in the back here, but.
McDonald's didn't hear you say that.
Take, take me a little further, driving through the site. Which way do you go through the drive-throughs from the?
Sure, right here. So say, say we come off of 44 in this access, we come through, we come around, we come into the site. If you're going to go through the drive-through, you're going to come around the corner, and you're going to either queue up on the building's window side drive-through, or you also have that secondary remote drive-through. And then your exit is back out and straight out to here. Stop sign at that, at that point.
Why would you want to come in and go straight in the other direction?
Why would you want to come in and straight in here?
Yeah.
Because of queuing for the tellers. Basically, if we just put the, we put the tellers right here?
No, I, I follow the way you're doing it, but you also show lines where someone would drive in, and instead of going to the, drive-in tellers, they would come straight into the site.
If you're going into the bank, if you're going into the bank, the easiest place to park is to come in, grab one of these two spaces that's not handicap, or if you have the handicap sticker, park in these two spaces, or come in and park where you have an ample opportunity to park.
Now, how do you get out?
It's, it's.
One way or the other.
It's not, two ways.
Yeah, two ways.
No, you can't go around the tellers.
Yeah, you'd go the other way.
Yeah, you'd come in here, and you would come back out this direction. Good point. Good point. Yep, this would be signed, "Do not enter." And you would only have that, that much space. Don't forget what's not shown in plan view. It's hard to see. You're going to have that canopy covering everything but that drive-through lane, the pass-through lane on the outside. So looking in plan view, it looks like it would be an easy for somebody to come around and come through that direction and get hung up behind the building. But with the canopy there and the "do not enter" signs and the tellers, it's going to be pretty understandable.
The volume of traffic is important to understand. It's, the commitment to McDonald's is it will be a bank or similar generating use, and it's 2.5 trips for 1,000 square feet. What were your numbers on that?
Just for reference, McDonald's has about 27, 2,700, 2,800 trips per day on a weekday. We are looking at, I think, 370 max out on a weekday. So it's a very small percentage of what uses the signals.
Are you going to be in violation? McDonald's will park your truck in front of the bank and watch the movement.
And you have easements or agreements with McDonald's for any signage? I know you're not asking for signage tonight, but you're going to come back for signage, right?
We're going to come back for signage to Design Review and to this commission for signage.
Any other questions? There were a couple of recommendations by Design Review Board as, as to trying to vary the mix of, was it stucco and?
Shingles on the, on the building, the building details.
So we would ask that you comply with that, with those suggestions.
We're good with that.
Okay. Any other discussion? So I'd be looking for a motion on this as well.
Application 1436.
Mr. Doyle moves. Mr. Post seconds. All in favor say aye.
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 Both.
And then the last thing we want to take care of is just informational that there's a modification to the previously approved application 12-15 of Philip Doyle, agent for Cobb School, Montessori Inc., owner for a site plan amendment for a gym and multipurpose space on the property. Hiram?
Mr. Chairman, given members the copies of the plans, I think there's about a total of a reduction, about 100 square feet, very small, minor reduction, a little bit of a change in the external way the building looks. They wanted to get started fairly soon. They didn't want to wait till September, so suggested them that they handle this way. The change in the building was so small that I thought the commission wouldn't have a problem with it. There's really no change in the rest of the parking or anything else that was previously approved.
But because the site plan amendment has to come here, seems, since it's smaller instead of bigger, that this is fine. So do we need to vote on this, or?
Yes, if you would please. That would make the record nice and clean.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan amendment for the Cobb School as submitted. Someone want to second it?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Irene, pick somebody to second it. There are four.
I'll take fun.
Okay. All right.
And then, at the end of the meeting, Mr. Chairman, I had two other informational items, so I'll go through those at the end of the meeting.
Okay, that'd be fine. All right, we're, don't, don't, yeah, we'll, we'll come back. All right, so thank you very much for your patience as we did all of that. As I'm sure most everyone in the room is aware, we had a substantial amount of discussion two weeks ago on the application number 1430 and 1431 relating to the, what we call the Pool Barn property owned by Mr. Thomas Evans. That hearing was left open at the end of the meeting, and so we will continue to take public comment. There are a few things that we would like to clear or at least get on the record first before we go back to a public hearing. There were things submitted from several people. So Hiram, do you want to go through that?
Sure. I think, Mr. Chairman, the clarification on the Planning Commission recommendation, I think I sent everyone the memo that the recommendation on the two applications was split. Both of them were negative. And you have that correspondence in your, as part of your file, as in the Planning Commission. Secondly, the question was asked at the hearing about the lot size, and the town attorney has provided a memo, which I've given everyone copies for. I think you have copies of that this evening as well. There are other letters of support and letters in opposition. You've been provided all those as part of your record as well. I think that's all I have since the last hearing. Mr. Chairman?
All right. All right, so I would like, as much as possible, for this to be constructive in terms of additional people who wish to speak. I know that Attorney Smith has submitted a response letter. I think it's appropriate that we get some of those points on the record for the audience, and not just that they're your points. Be, I think a couple of things that were raised specifically at the last hearing relative to the minimum size of the lot for the PAD. Mr. Smith spoke to that, and your correspondence, as did Town Attorney Bob DiCrescenzo, that the regulation is quite clear that a non-conforming lot in the industrial zone at the time of the approval of the PAD code was, would be a qualifying property for a PAD. So the literal interpretation of that, without the proviso that followed, gave a contrary opinion, but the fact of the matter is, the record's very clear that the property does qualify for the PAD structure. Mr. Smith, I'll give you some time if you'd like, but I would, I really appreciate that you be brief and to the points that are, that you feel you'd like to get on the record. And then we'll take any additional comments to the extent that it's new or different point of view, if that's all right.
For the record, Chris Smith. Mr. Chairman, do you want to take any final comments from the citizens, and then I can just do one response?
As opposed to?
No, I think I'd like to do it in the order I proposed, since you, you, you took the chance to, to submit a letter after listening last week, which was fine, but.
And one other thing, I think we had to read into the record the Planning Commission's report technically under the statute. I think the town attorney referenced it. I just didn't want to forget that before we close the hearing tonight. You can do that later, I suppose, but I just wanted to make note of that.
Yeah, we will do that.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Mr. Peck.
For the record, my name is Chris Smith, and I am a land use attorney and a partner at the law firm of Shipman and Goodwin out of our Hartford office. And I appear before you again this evening, this time with the continued public hearing from July 7th, on behalf of the owner applicant, Mr. Tom Evans, who is here this evening. We did bring our entire team that was here last time. In addition, we have Scott Hesketh, who is a traffic engineer and had prepared the report. And Scott is available to respond to any specific questions that you have. I would like to just briefly walk through the response letter, and hopefully everybody has it. I'm not going to go line by line. If you don't, I did bring, anybody who doesn't have it, I have extra copies. That's a letter from myself. It has Shipman and Goodwin. Letterhead at the top. I have extra copies for folks if you don't have one. And I did provide a copy of this to Mr. Fitzgerald when I sent it into the commission. Just so you have, there's some exhibits in there that are worthwhile to, to courtesy, make sure that everybody has, is aware of.
Thank you.
I've got mine. Thank you.
He's not here.
Does everybody get this?
Okay, and this is a letter that I had addressed to the Zoning Commission, Town of Simsbury, care of your town planner. It's dated July 17, 2014, and has some exhibits attached to it, A through D. The first item that I was just trying to address some of the issues that were raised at the last meeting to try to expedite this process with the hearing. And the first item that I, I do address in the letter is the minimum track size issue. It's heard from the chair that the town attorney had weighed in. And, you know, I respectfully submit, I agree with the town attorney, and I respectfully submit as indicated at the second page, that if you go to the second full paragraph specifically, it states that the regulations provide, quote, "Any lot not conforming to the minimum required lot size at the time of the adoption of this article," I italicize the following, "shall be deemed to be legally non-conforming and shall be acceptable for or inclusion in a PAD application." I provided you with a copy of that specific regulation, and that deals with eligible zones and tracts of land that qualify for PAD applications. The regulations actually include eight different zone districts. The I-1, which is what this property is located in, is one of them. The I-1 is the only district that has a minimum lot size requirement for a PAD. More importantly, the PAD regulations were adopted according to your regulations on May 3, 2010. And I did provide you with Exhibit B. That's a letter from Attorney John Harvey Jr. It's dated July 16, 2014. Mr. Harvey represented Mr. Evans when he purchased the property, and he provides you with a letter opinion that as of, as far back as 1957, the subject property, 155 Hot Meadow, was at the same size and in its same configuration then as it is today. So clearly, it was, it qualifies for the PAD. Also, I did provide you, Mr. Evans provided me with a reduced copy of a map recorded on the land records here in, in the Town of Simsbury.
Integrated, yeah.
Indicating and confirming that the lot size, if you look at that lot on that map, it's in Exhibit B of the second sheet and attached to the letter, it's quite clear that it's same size, and it was in existence as of May 31, 1957. So I'm not going to spend any more time on that. I would just respectfully submit that the regulations, I think, are very clear, the plain and unambiguous language, that, that this lot does qualify. And we did review that with your, with Mr. Peck before.
There's no argument about this, so it's.
Okay, move on.
Help, help yourself here, buddy.
Number two, open space, open space and public amenities. That was an issue that was raised by Attorney Fitzgerald, and I do provide you here with, it does reference in the PAD regulations that there be provided areas of open space and public amenities, and that there be adequate provisions for maintaining those open space areas. You have a definition of open space in your regulations. I provide you with that in the second paragraph, and that calls for having portions of property maintained for recreational and conservation areas. At the, suggest, were a number of comments at the last meeting, and we did provide the commission with modifications, some tweaks to the plans to address those comments. And actually, we had some comments from Design Review, and I know specifically from the chairman concerning access from the Heritage Trail, which is located to the west of the property. property. And specifically, the plans were modified by Mr. Hesketh, where, once again, we are retaining the access to and from the Heritage Trail. The designated pathway from the trail to the proposed convenience store has been reconfigured, so it doesn't now loop through the parking area. It doesn't go through any parking area. So anybody coming from the Heritage Trail will be able to walk directly to the convenience store without having to go through, again, any designated parking area. And that was a concern raised at the planning commission, design review, and I know from the chair and some other members of the commission. So that's been redesigned. We do provide for three different bike racks. Those are all situated, so nobody has to, they can park the bike there, so to speak. They can go to the convenience store. They don't have to go through the parking area to gain access. And then finally, a shelter gazebo in this area here. And we heard some concerns from some folks that were involved with the, with the trail and from some of the commissioners, I believe, and some of the citizens. And this is provided for folks that are utilizing the trail, desire to patronize the proposed convenience store, use the public facilities within, the bathroom facilities within the convenience store, or the shelter gazebo as a resting location, or just to get out of inclement weather while they're running on the trail. So those revisions to the plans have been filed, and you do have reduced copies as Exhibit C. But that's essentially the changes. There are two other minor ones, just to save time. The electric charging stations were relocated over to this area, so it would be more convenient for folks as opposed to placing it in the convenience store area. There was a comment concerning snowshelves. Mr. Hesketh feels that there's plenty, as were proposed. There's plenty of area to put snow. Parking space was eliminated over here to provide just additional storage area. We still meet the parking requirements, but that was added even though we really didn't think it was necessary. Number three, just make the affirmative statement that if indeed the residential component were to be eliminated, I think this was a question from the chair, and we heard this at planning, that to be replaced with either commercial or retail, the site as designed would be able to accommodate the requisite parking spaces. So take away, if you said, you know, we don't think residential's good, keep it all commercial, retail, we can make it work, and we'll be able to meet the parking requirements. Item number four in the letter on page three is the reference to the Rabbi Samuels with the Shabbat of the Valley. There were some questions concerning, raised concerning the validity of that particular letter, so Mr. Evans went back to the rabbi and did obtain a new letter that has been provided to you. That's attached as Exhibit D, indicating no objection. I do have the original letter here that I would like to put into the record. It's just the original of what you have attached. If I give that to you? Here we go. Thank you. And then the last comment in the letter is number five, and that concerns the zone text amendment. We did hear comments that the zone text amendment concerning amending the distance requirement regulation relative to having a separation distance of 400 feet from different uses, such as churches, which is, obviously, we're right next to a synagogue, was too broad relative to applying on a townwide basis. And one of the things that was suggested, and the give and take during the public hearing was, well, why don't we, if you, within your discretion, you don't think that's a good idea, you certainly could amend the text, you can make it more restrictive by, and you could adopt, you could substitute the language that's proposed with what's proposed in the letter, and that is a simple sentence, quote, "The aforementioned distance requirement shall not apply to a church located in an industrial zone district." And that would take care of that. It's specific, it only applies to one use, a church use in an industrial zone, and Simsbury, not unlike other suburban towns, are experiencing churches coming into industrial zones, and this would provide that flexibility to this commission where a church, by virtue of a church coming into an industrial zone, it wouldn't be penalizing industrial uses such as comparable to a gasoline station if you were to adopt this. You would still presumably have special exception authority and site plan authority, or as with the PAD, still authority to look at the particular use. But that, that would be one way to address that with the text amendment modification. Quickly, six, there was a reference to traffic, and the, from the traffic study, I'd like to note, as Mr. Hesketh noted during his presentation, and as is provided for in the traffic study, that all those numbers are based on 100% of the projected ITE trips being new traffic and not coming from existing pass-by traffic on Hot Meadow. And as Mr. Hesketh indicated, it's his experience over 30 some odd years, I think he's older than me, actually, that about 70% of the traffic that's expected in those numbers is actually going to be from existing traffic passing by on Hot Meadow. But to be conservative, it was assumed that all the, all the traffic attributed to the convenience store, the gas station use, and the mixed-use proposal would be 100% new traffic. And even with that assumption, the numbers indicate that there will be no adverse impact to a level of service with the proposed uses. Quick comment on economic impact. Mr. Evans did talk with the tax collector today. Apparently, I think the taxes for this property, about $7,600 a year. Tax collector looked at the proposal and estimated, just a ballpark estimate, that based on what's being proposed with the uses where footage, it would generate this use if approved, would generate approximately $72,000 a year, which would be almost a tenfold increase, never mind the additional folks that would be employed not only at the convenience store and the station, but also within the uses in the barn. Before concluding, I believe that, well, I'll conclude with Dale, but in my conclusion, I respectfully submit to the commission that the proposed PAD is consistent and meets all the requirements of your PAD regulations, as was noted by the gentleman speaking on behalf of a couple of the applications that you approved earlier with the zone change, that this is consistent with the goal of the PAD, to provide flexibility for a property owner and to be responsive to the market. And you heard from Mr. Evans the last time, and his efforts in trying to market this property and his desire to retain the barn, but I would respectfully submit that this does satisfy the requirements and for the PAD as provided by your regulations. And I would also respectfully submit that the proposed text amendments, especially with the proposed modification that we're suggesting to the commission concerning the distance requirement, certainly is consistent. They both are consistent with your comprehensive plan, which are your regulations and your zone map, your plan of conservation and development that I walked you through the last time, and I'm not going to do that again, and will not result in a public, I mean, an adverse impact to the public health and safety. So based on that, I would respectfully request that the commission act favorably upon the pending applications, which would also include the certificate of app, certificate of location that is referenced in the application package. I know that in closing, Mr. Cutler, our architect, just had a couple of brief statements that he would like to make to the full commission concerning the pool barn and its, and its restoration and adaptive reuse, with permission of the chair. Mr. Cutler can just have a couple of minutes on that. It'll just be a couple of minutes.
Give you a little bit of latitude here, quickly.
No, actually, I'll save you the trouble.
Okay.
Since my comments are not editorial in nature, then I have to give you another one. I'll defer that and wait until the public has a chance to speak.
Great, thank you.
That's all right, we're here.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have another copy? The one we had was actually the first part of the document.
Which is the... I actually had a paper in the back, so I did it.
Oh, yes, this is...
I got it, I'm going to sit down.
Okay.
Mr. Smith, do you have a spare?
I'll go last.
Yeah, I don't have any.
So, thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate it, especially getting, for the public and for the commission, those changes that were made from two weeks ago as it relates to moving the path and a couple of other things that were made. I want to be sure we got that on the record. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Please come up, state your name and address.
Alan Needham, Two Basswood Lane.
Alan, just one second.
At the last meeting, town attorney made a comment about Mr. Needham being a planning commission chairman and testifying against the application recused from the application of planning commission. I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, that town attorney last time made that point to me. So I just want to make you aware of that.
I'm not sure what the point is. I recuse myself of planning.
You're not allowed to testify from another commission on an application that you recuse yourself from. You know, you do what you want to do, but I'm just suggesting to that sort of town attorney from the last time.
The only reason I did this is that when I took my training, I remembered that I was a law.
I'll listen to the town attorney. Can I distribute a letter then?
It's testimony in the record, I think it's...
All right, Joanna, would you hand off this letter to the commission, please?
Just to be clear, too, I don't make the point of being negative toward Mr. Needham.
Or anyone else.
Or anyone else, Peter Thorcan, but I just think, you know, having had that conversation with the town attorney, if I didn't bring it up, I don't want somebody to say I didn't. Say it.
Attorney Fitzgerald injured his back rather badly today and is unable to attend.
So this is a letter from him to the commission?
This is a letter from him that I would hope that you take a minute to read.
It was delivered by, would you give your name? Joanna?
Joanna Needham.
Excuse me, is there an extra copy I provided Mr. Fitzgerald with? Does anybody have one?
Here.
I didn't get one from him. Well, that's okay, that's more important, you have it.
Alan.
Any one of us would be glad to read it.
I'll read it.
Thanks, John.
Well, I would not violate the rules knowingly. You should...
Appreciate it.
Can I have that one?
Sure.
So, my name is John Lucker, 88 Blue Ridge Drive, Simsbury.
Wait, wait, John.
Lucker, L-U-C-K-E-R. L-U-C-K-E-R. 88 Blue Ridge Drive, Simsbury. Okay, I wrote this myself. For a very long time, it has been land use policy not to allow gas stations within 400 feet of houses of worship. Now you are being asked to change that for an application that is obviously unpopular. Simsbury and many other towns have understood that gas stations do not belong near sensitive areas, but you are being asked to customize the regulations to change all that for the sake of one applicant. The problem here is the gas station, not the development of this property. There are two instances where gas stations are a distance from mainstream churches, and two where sensitive uses have been added, a considerable distance from an existing gas station. None of these are rebutting a gas station, as is being asked here. I would like to note for the record that we object to the hearings for the text amendment and the zone change being heard at the same meeting. In the past, text amendment, in the past, the text amendment would have been cleared up first. You have several reasons to deny this. Cautionary letters from Attorney Ritson from across the street, a letter from a concerned congregant at the synagogue, a letter from First Church objecting to the text amendment, a cautionary letter from the Farmington Valley Watershed Association, and a report from the Conservation Commission stating that it is not an ideal location for a gas station. You also have a rather extraordinary amount of public concern, as indicated by the petition signatures and the number of people who attended the hearing. I ask that you be consistent with the past zoning commissions and deny these applications. In addition, a few additional comments I'd like to make. First of all, I would make note that it is rather ironic that the, the little loophole that was discovered this past week about lot size with regards to the PAD basically renders the entire language around lot size meaningless. That for a particular I-zone, everything is grandfathered, because I don't recall us designating new I-zones recently, so that basically means every I-zone in town is grandfathered, and therefore, we can have a PAD virtually anywhere. I'd also make note that, and this is something that I've spoken to this commission about before, almost all the time, all you hear are exceptions or zone changes lately. I haven't, I haven't heard hardly anything. In fact, all five of the agenda items for public hearing today are zone changes or special exceptions. And I guess I'm wondering, at what point will we, as a town, begin to think about our zones that we have as something that people need to live by and, and not offset the impact that these zone changes or special acceptance have to neighbors? People buy property with designated zones, and people make business decisions as well as personal decisions about where they live based on zones. Seems wholly unfair to me that anybody can just come in here and change a zone anytime they want, and lately, it seems like that's been, that's been the norm. I also wanted to just make a comment about the, the rabbi at the synagogue who wrote this letter. First of all, I would make note that the rabbi is only one officer of the synagogue. The letter did not state that his letter reflected the position of the board of directors of the corporation that actually owns that property. That property is actually owned, as I recall, by Shabbat of the Valley, Inc., might be the name, or something like that. It has a board of directors. I looked on the Concord system at the Secretary of State website. The rabbi is but one member of the board and not the entire member. And in fact, you can see the board on the left side of the letter. And, and as, as I said earlier, while the rabbi may be okay with the gas station at that site, he certainly should not be allowed to speak for every other site in town where someone may want to build a gas station next to a church or synagogue. So I think, from my perspective, the text amendment is wholly unacceptable. Last point, and then I'll sit down. I think it's important, with this application and all future applications, that the zoning commission consider the ramifications of the extremely inarticulate, nonspecific, non-objective, and non-met, nonmetric-oriented PAD regulation that we have in place today. This was something that was raised during the entire PAD drafting process by a number of people, myself included. There was actually a dissenting memo that was sent to the zoning commission by a number of people on the PAD subcommittee about warning that this type of a thing was going to happen, where there, where it was very difficult for you all to measure and understand how the PAD applies in different zones. So, you know, as, as they say, there are ramifications to votes, and in this case, we, we risk reaping what we sow. So I would really recommend that perhaps in the future, the zoning commission look at perhaps changing the PAD to be more specific. Thank you.
Thank you.
All I've got is the same thing.
Tim's letter.
Tim's letter.
I don't have Tim's letter.
I'll read it now, if you want. I guess I'm going to read attorney, the attorney, attorney's letter.
What's his name?
His name is Timothy Fitzgerald, from the law firm of Lyer, Sheridan, and Fitzgerald. I couldn't do a copy of this one. Dear commission members, at the July 7, 2014, public hearing on the above applications, I submitted a letter on behalf of several neighbors and then reviewed their objections to the development proposal. Several neighbors also offered their individual comments about the proposal. The response letter submitted by the applicant's attorney does not overcome these objections. Number one, text amendment. The applicant encourages this commission to solve the regulation obstacle to this proposal by a form of spot zoning, rewriting the existing regulation in such a way that it creates a custom-tailored exception to his needs that affects, if not only his parcel, then only a very few parcels. This is pure gimmickry. The PAD zoning should not be used as a tool to dilute or even eliminate basic underlying zoning regulations, which promote the general welfare of the town. If such a maneuver is allowed, it is no stretch to think that future applicants will use the overly flexible PAD mechanism and customize text amendments and this specific precedent to advance their maximum development scheme, strong opposition notwithstanding. Number two, lot size. Following the public hearing, the town planner identified an exception to the minimum lot size requirement in the PAD regulations. It does seem to authorize a submission of a PAD application for underlying industrial zone, which is less than the minimum 10 acres, if this non-conforming lot existed when the PAD regulations were adopted in 2010. It seems to have been a curious exercise to even mention minimum lot sizes in the PAD regulations, when in fact, it would appear that almost every single lot in the town of Simsbury is eligible for a PAD zone change. The PAD is a floating zone. While floating zones are authorized by statute, the danger is that the nebulous standards and great flexibility turn it into a form of spot zoning. As one highly regarded zoning commentator put it, while the floating zone has been approved in numerous court decisions and is superficially impressive to zoning commissioners who want to zone land on a case-by-case basis, the floating zone does have its drawbacks. It can result in individual preferences and respond to development pressures rather than considering the best area for location of particular uses. It is contrary to the zoning goal of stabilization of property values and consistency with surrounding land uses. If a parcel proposed to be used for a floating zone is sufficiently large, it may overcome arguments that it is spot zoning, or not in accordance with a comprehensive plan under, by Section 8-2. The uncertainty... The uncertainty of a floating zone springing up in an undesirable location and real or imaginary fears of favoritism by the zoning commission has also dampened enthusiasm for the floating zone concept. This is quoted from Connecticut Land Use Law and Practice by Robert Fuller, Section 38. "This parcel is not sufficiently large. The size of a parcel does matter, especially where the proposal for intense mixed uses is dominated by perhaps one of the most intense and automotive-centered uses there are, an eight-pump gasoline station and a large convenience store. On top of that is a large retail component whose specific characteristics are currently unknown and for housing/work-studio units. In addition, 71 required parking spaces, based on a generous allocation of space to storage, all compacted into 1.87 acres." Number four, the planning goals of the PAD. This proposal represents an abuse of the PAD concept and threatens the integrity of the PAD concept. As a floating zone, a PAD is essentially a separate zoning district. It involves a trade-off. In exchange for allowing greater flexibility and relaxing certain nonessential zoning regulations, a developer can promote important planning goals, whether they be form-based designed, attracting certain uses that address important public needs, and preserving a substantial amount of open space. This PAD is for a large gas station and convenience store. Every town needs and wants some gas stations and convenience stores, but the public hearing established that Simsbury but the public hearing established that Simsbury is well-served already by existing gas stations and those new ones already approved. The other components of this mixed-use PAD, unspecified retail and the four housing/work-studio units, are at best very dubious. This housing does not address any identified need, is incompatible with other intents and uses, and is not especially attractive or functional. The generic retail store does not offer any significant economic gains. This commission must make a judgment. Can a developer utilize a customized text amendment and the PAD label simply because he wants maximum economic return on his development? The applicant reminded the commission at the last public hearing that he invested $100,000 in the permit process. Maybe an exaggeration, maybe not. The amount a developer spends on approval should have absolutely no bearing on the merits of the proposal. The applicant himself would likely concede this point in the abstract. It was mentioned only to create sympathy for his desire to maximize his economic return. If that is a proper motive that guides zoning regulations and zone changes, there would be little point in having zoning regulations at all. Very truly, Timothy Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that letter? Is the author a Simsbury resident?
I don't know.
If not, the...
He's an attorney represented by Simsbury.
Just like Mr. Smith is an attorney for Simsbury.
Are the represented parties identified for the record?
Yeah.
This whole group back here.
By name and address is how it's supposed to be done.
We'd be happy to.
All right.
He remembers that he actually had to be here.
Time out. Excuse me, excuse me. This is not a free-for-all. Question was raised. Would you please come to the stand and give your name and ask the question for the record?
Good evening. I'm Kevin Crimmens, 5 Wynwood Road. Before I ask my question, I'll disclose I'm a member of the Simsbury Economic Development Task Force as well as the Simsbury Board of Ethics, past vice chairman of the Simsbury Economic Development Commission. Speaking in my personal capacity.
Yeah, all right.
The question is whether the author of the letter that we just heard is a Simsbury resident. If not, if the represented parties would be identified for the record, by name and address, justice, that's done.
Thank you.
My name is Ferb Jansen, 3 Foxden Road, West Simsbury. I am on the Land Use Commission. I'm speaking as an individual. I have not taken a vote on anything on this issue, although I have seen the presentation twice. I attend most, if not all, of the Economic Development Commission meetings and I think this is a perfect fit for what they are trying to do and for the town of Simsbury. It's been improved environmentally. We're restoring a historic building. We're, I heard tonight, increasing the taxes tenfold. I'm a big advocate of the bike path, restrooms, shelter, bike racks. The plan of conservation development stresses doing something in the south part of town. Exceptions, I do a lot of business in West Hartford. West Hartford would not be what it was today if it wasn't for exceptions. You did exceptions tonight. Exceptions are brought about by changes in market and by the taste of the public. And if we didn't have exceptions, we'd probably still be making buggy whips and nothing would change. But I think we need exceptions in order to go forward and to be competitive with the other towns, so. The other issue that bothers me as an individual is the most successful parish in this town is a little, a six-year-old's baseball throw from an existing gas station. It's been there forever. So a lot of these issues are brought up or to, you know, I know that people say we don't need another gas station. In my business, I hear it all the time. We don't need another restaurant. We don't need another restaurant. Well, look what's happened. When I first came to this area, there was a Howard Johnson's on Route 44 and people probably say we don't need another restaurant, but look what we've got in that town and this. So I think it's a solid proposal, professionally done. I'm not worried about the environment and I think it's going to be good for the town in the long run. So, and whatever's going to happen across the street, so. Thank you very much. Be bright, be brief, be gone.
Susan Van Cleef, 3D Tungusis Place, Terriffill. Oh, Vancleef, capital V as in Victor, A-N, space, capital K-L-E-E-F. 3D Tungusis Place. And I do serve on the town's Clean Energy Task Force, but we will not be making any votes about this. So this is all my personal ideas. And I did submit a letter, but I have a few more things to say. I was not able to be at the July 7 meeting. And basically, what I did is I did have some time to read the PAD between July 7th and now and I just want to express, it does piggyback on some of the comments that are made, so I'll be brief, that I do not think this plan at all in any way is, it's very removed from the intent of the PAD, which I think is very subjective to begin with, but I just don't see how this fits into the PAD. A few points would be the PAD says that it encourages proposals of mixed use and other attractive innovative developments in certain non-residential zones. And I don't see what is innovative or attractive about a Cumberland Farms. And again, I know that's subjective, but there Cumberland Farms everywhere. What's new? And again, it is another gas station and we don't need one. Restaurants can be unique. This is just a gas station with a convenience store. There's nothing unique about it. It also says that the master planning of sites to create attractive, livable, environmentally wholesome, and pedestrian-friendly public spaces. Okay, that's what the intent of the PAD is. Appropriate to their surroundings. And so I don't understand how Cumberland Farms on Hot Meadow Street with exhaust fumes, gasoline odors, noise, light pollution, is at all attractive, environmentally wholesome, or even pedestrian-friendly, even with the bike path. People walk on the bike path, but pedestrian-friendly usually means people are going to use that space as a pedestrian. So I don't see that at all. It also says that it shall include areas of open space and public amenities in a design form, location, and area to be approved by the zoning commission. In terms of open space, again, I have not, you know, based on the fact that the attorney for the proposal did say there was open space here. As a member of many environmental organizations, as a science person, I'm a science educator, I have worked on open space issues in science capacity. There is no open space. Open space usually is something that allows for natural resources such as animals, plants, water, to actually exist in a way that they can survive. All right, and yes, it is for people to use also to enjoy those things, but there's nothing within this plan that's open space. And I also think that in terms of the bike path, I ride the bike path a lot and I just don't think people come here to see Cumberland Farms. People ride on that bike path to get away from things like Cumberland Farms. So that's another one of the things, a point I would like to make. And then I think all the other points probably that I have written here have been made, so I don't think that I will spend any more of your time. But thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ben Hefern. I live at 21 North Field Road.
Can you spell your last name?
I'd like to echo my neighbor's sentiment there. I oppose the idea of the gas station. If you'll indulge me, I'll give you a quick background of where I'm coming from. My wife and I are from upstate New York. Our careers took us to New Jersey for a few years and when our second child was born, we were looking for a place to settle down and we drove all over New England. And, I mean, I had job offers up by Boston, up near Rockport, Portsmouth, New Hampshire. And we chose Simsbury out of everywhere else. We drove all over the place and we thought, this is the place that we want to be. And to give you an idea of how badly I wanted it to be here, I took not only a lateral move, but I took a pay cut just to take my family here, so. Why? What was attractive to us about Simsbury? You know, respect for history, just a general feeling of constraint, you know, just a nice place to be. So I feel like this is inconsistent with the character of the town. I work for Chubb Insurance, which is very close to the proposed area there and I can tell you it's a nightmare in the morning getting to work. Already, the people that want to turn left out of Dunkin' Donuts. So having this right across from that is not going to help that situation. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gedalya. I'll spell that. No one can spell it, so I will. Y-A-H. The last name is Jeremiah. No one could spell that either. It's J-E-R-E-M-I-A-S. And I live at 1 Hamilton Lane, right around the corner. I believe a couple of weeks ago, as I was unavailable to attend the meeting because I was traveling, someone read a statement on my behalf and I'd like to add a couple of points to that statement. As Rabbi Samuels is a rabbi, I too am a rabbi. I'm not the rabbi of Chabad next door to the proposed site, but I am a rabbi as well. My wife and I and our five children, ages, let me see if I get this right or else when I go home, it's on record and I'll be in trouble. 17, 15, 12, 5, and 3. Moved to Simsbury to Wheaton because we wanted a nice, quiet place to live. We moved from Waterbury, Connecticut, which was not quiet at all. We are also Sabbath observers and we only walk to synagogue. We don't drive in a car. We don't take a bicycle. We only walk. Unlike Rabbi Samuels, who lives on the Latimer Lane side, he's able to take the walking trail straight through Latimer Lane to the backyard of Chabad. We can't. We have to walk down Hamilton, Quad Hill, make a left onto Hot Meadow and then walk Hot Meadow until we get to Chabad or a little before Chabad, we're able to hop on that trail and walk to Chabad. It has become increasingly more dangerous to do so with Dunkin' Donuts there. And I am afraid that walking with our five children will be very, very dangerous to walk along Hot Meadow. As I said, we don't have the ability to drive in a car and therefore, walking every Saturday morning and Friday nights and Friday night coming home and Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, and Saturday night for the evening service when we go, and we go quite often, we're regular attendees, will be very, very dangerous for us. The second thing I'd like to point out is that we have to understand the difference between, let's say, an opinion of Rabbi Samuels of Chabad, who Rabbi Samuels happens to be a wonderful person and a very, very big scholar. Rabbi Samuels would like to grow his institution and in doing that, he would like to have the exposure. The more people that will see Chabad, the more chance he has that people will join Chabad. He would be happy if a target grew across the street. Unlike Rabbi Samuels, and with all due respect to the good rabbi, who I am very close friends with, we don't represent that view. We moved to Simsbury to Wheaton for quiet, for peace and quiet. We would like to be able to go to Chabad and concentrate on our studies, on our Torah studies. We would like to concentrate on our spiritual experience with our maker, with the Lord, without the smell of gasoline, without the loud comedy channel 24 hours a day, without the people coming in and going, without the sale of beer and lottery tickets, plus a lot more. And therefore, we oppose this project and I'd like to thank you for hearing me out.
All right, anyone else?
My name is Mike Downs. 72, Simsbury Manor Drive. And that's Wheaton. I've lived at that address since 1982, so, you know, the whole area is pretty familiar with me. The pool barn. Would I like to see something developed there? Yeah, at that building, yes. As far as the gas station, no. I mean, a show of hands, has anybody ever searched for fuel in this town? Anybody? Or you have a hard time finding fuel? Or snacks? Because they're all available everywhere. There's going to be another component as far as, they just talked about moving the access from the walk path. That site is also going to end up being a cut-through to Dunkin' Donuts from the walk path. As far as the liability for the town and the walk path, I don't know where that begins or where it ends. And Dunkin' Donuts in the long term, if they're going to honor that commitment to the public restrooms, et cetera, because of liability, because on the end of the building here, I'm assuming that's a wheelchair ramp, there's going to be a no skateboarding sign there. There will be a no skateboarding sign, assuming zoning would let it be put there. For a good reason. Because it's, so that's a contradiction of walk path access to the site because they're going to have no choice but to put it there. I don't know what Cumberland Farms' policy is on, you know, basically letting the town have access to their property. I know it's a public place for fuel, but I'm not so sure in the long term, after the first lawsuit. Let's face it, there will be one. I do live downstream from a potential fuels bill. It was mentioned that it was a state-of-the-art system that wasn't available five years ago. Five years from now, there'll be a system that wasn't available today that will make that system obsolete. Because, you know, any recall for anything is just, it happens. But I'm just, it's not a good fit for the town. A good fit would be use of the building, not a gas station. Again, I'm not arguing the fact that that building, you know, something nice could be there. Nobody knows what's going to be there. You do know what's next door and what's next door, it's just not needed. I would hope you would recommend against it.
My name is Barry Rahmey, R-A-H-M as in Mary, Y. You got it. And 135 Old Canal Way in Wheaton. Hi, I probably don't have too many original points to add that haven't been said here. I really feel for Mr. Evans. If he was looking for sympathy, he got it from me. And I hate to speak out against business. I'm a longtime Simsbury resident. I've lived here since 1980, except for a brief... except for a brief hiatus when I lived in East Granby. We lived in East Granby for about four years, and we moved back here because we love the town. North of Simsbury, and I believe it's in Westfield, directly on Route 10, there is a Cumberland Farms that looks very much like what we saw two weeks ago. And the description and the elevations, you know, make it look somewhat pleasant. Patio with umbrellas. But when you actually look at it, it's very plastic. It's very inauthentic. I know you have to work within the law, and I know this is about zoning, and it's not an emotional issue, but for, for many of us, it is. And this does not seem to be within the character of the town at all. Again, I commend Mr. Evans for trying to save that building. It's a great old building. But it's difficult for me to see how we can reconcile aesthetically that beautiful old turn-of-the-century building with a very cookie cutter Cumberland Farms. The gas station part alone, with the covered shelter, is so high, the scale is so inappropriate for, for Hot Meadow Street in that area. So, thank you very much for allowing me to say that.
Thank you. So, yeah, we'll take one more, because I think we're getting down to, pretty much everybody's had a chance.
My name is Judy Rabinoitz. That's R.A.B.I.N.O.W.I.T.Z. 126 Hot Meadow Street. I won't beat to death things that have already been said. As a close neighbor of the proposed site, I would like to say that I am in favor of some development, however, not a gas station. And the point that I want to make is, we as a town, you as a commission, are being asked to make an exception, to make changes to wording, to change the zoning. And if we as a town and you as a commission are being asked to make these concessions, I would like to point out that it should be for something that the town, the neighborhood, the populace needs and wants. This, in my view, does not qualify, so I ask you to not make the requested changes. Thank you very much.
I have a very correction to make to something somebody said.
If it's a correction to something you said, that's fine, but if it's just something somebody else said...
Well, with public hearings, aren't we allowed to look back to anybody else's?
Please.
Sorry, I agree. I just wanted-
Please come to the microphone.
Sure.
We are being recorded.
I just wanted to comment on Mr. Jansen's, John Mucker, 88 Blueers Drive. Mr. Jansen made a comment that, that this proposal is consistent with the P O C D. And I just want to say for the record that it was noted by the planning commission in a negative referral that this was not consistent with the P O C D. So, I would think that Mr. Jansen, who is one of the authors of the P O C D, would recognize that. Thank you.
All right. So it's, I think we, we have given everyone a chance. One's going twice. Gone. I think we've had a lot of very good discussion about this. We do need to read into the record, Hiram, the planning things.
In this stage, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission manager from June 24th, which you have been sent, have been supplied with commission. Commission has reviewed, the planning commission has reviewed the referral material and voted as follows. Number one, regarding the zoning application for a site plan amendment and zone change. On a motion to provide a positive referral, the vote was two in favor and two in, and two opposed. The referral on this aspect is therefore negative. Number two, regarding the zoning application for the two proposed revisions to the zoning text. On a motion to provide a negative referral, the vote was four in favor of the motion. Referral on this aspect of the matter is therefore negative. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do we close the hearing, then have discussion?
Yes. Okay. Yeah. Mr. Smith, I, I'm not sure what you are hoping to add at this point, but-
Well, we're not going to get into the, for the record, Mr. Chairman, Chris Smith and members of the commission. There were some recommendations from Mr. Peck concerning an entrance and a egress and ingress to the site, and I just would like Mr. Hesketh, Scott Hesketh, to put his recommendation to come in on one of the entrances and out on the other. And, and actually, a comment, I suppose I can make it, and Scott, if I don't do a good enough job, feel free to step up. But the problem with that is that this really should remain a two-way if the commission were to approve the application, just because people that are utilizing this building, so that way they don't have to cross through to get over to the side to leave, for example. So having the two-way, two-way here would be conducive to, you know, not creating a safety issue by forcing folks to have to go through the entire site to get to the other side. That was the only comment, Mr. Chairman. I know that Mr. Heffern, he just wanted to make a brief comment. I don't know if he still wants to do that, but I am through, and thank you very much, and on behalf of the applicant, thank you.
Mr. Smith, in the last meeting, you said that you couldn't get anyone here from Cumberland Farms because they had conflicts. Are they here tonight?
We do have a representative from Cumberland Farms here this evening, Mr. Paul Wilson.
For the record, I'm Joe Cutler, partner in Kenyon and Cutler Architects in Avon, Connecticut. You may remember, our responsibility was the adaptive reuse of the building we all referred to as the Pool Barn. It, one of the things in my brief presentation that I kind of realized on reflection is that I didn't really express the uniqueness of the opportunity that this application presents. We have a building, it's over 100 years old. It's in surprisingly good condition for its age, and that's attributable to a couple of different things. The first of which is, it's a building that hasn't been used very hard, other than the fact that it was a tobacco warehouse, or it's, which was its initial use. Since that time, it's been occupied by a number of businesses, none of which sought to modify, renovate, improve the existing structure. So it exists pretty much the way it was built in 1911. Kind of as I, as I mentioned in my presentation, it's a very, very sound structure, not only because of its former occupancy, but because the owners that have, that have, that own it over the years have been conscious of keeping the exterior envelope of the building intact. One of the things that we rarely face in the renovation of a 100-year-old building is one that doesn't have a lot of structural deficiencies. This is certainly one of those types of buildings. It is a building that is historically significant in Simsbury in terms of the agricultural history of Simsbury, particularly the tobacco industry. I'm not sure that Martin Luther King worked here, but it's entirely possible that he did visit this building. But it is a significant building historically. This is kind of a unique opportunity to preserve that history. It's unfortunate that it's a building that, whose renovation, you know, can't really be supported by a standalone-type project. It's something that needs to be paired with some other income-producing property. That's the situation that we have here. And that's just a, you know, comment that hopefully you'll, you'll think about in your deliberations on this application. It is a very unique opportunity for the town, so.
Thank you. Okay, so, I'm looking for a motion to-
A move to have a close the public hearing?
Second.
Can we still ask questions after we close?
Yes.
Of the, of the-
Yes.
No, not of the applicant, no.
Okay. Oh, is that true?
Yeah.
In that case, I'd like to ask the Cumberland Farms representative what we're talking about here as far as hours of operation and...
For the record, Paul Wilson from Cumberland Farms. With every Cumberland Farms, we, we do propose 24 hours operation, seven days a week. But we are always willing to work with the community and come up with the hours that best suit both our needs and the community's needs.
Because the plan now is a 24-hour operation.
We do that with all of our locations initially, yes.
Okay. That's your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the commissioners to the applicant?
Any, any more proposed activity for the barn, other than just kind of the ideas that you've laid out for us? Well, we think we're going to have a potential retail operation. We'd like to do the apartments, but any bites, anything that you can share with us that might go in there?
It would be smaller, it would be geared to smaller, you know, eight, divided up into 800-square-foot units, as you see in Dale's plan, and it would be smaller. There's a need in town, as you saw with Rich Korea when he was talking about the diversity of getting that zone change, you approved it. It's, there's a need for smaller retail affordable spaces, and that's really what I'd like to do, is, is turn that into, you know, eight smaller business spaces. I talked to various local, well-established, people who own office buildings, and the person who owns 245, he owns Avon South, and he was saying that he thought that even the work, the work, the live workspaces, he said he got somebody who are RE that would love to do that, somebody who's got a place at the shore who's downsizing and would love to keep a presence and keep an office in town and, and affordable office, live space. So, I think it'll work. I'm willing to, I'm willing to build it and make it work, you know, and whatever that takes, costless, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Ryan, seconded by, or Mr. Gray, seconded by Mr. Gray to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, so the public hearing is closed. We are now, we can then have a discussion regarding the application and decide whether we want to vote on this tonight or postpone it until we meet again. We have statutory issues time-wise?
Sixty-five days from tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Which is when?
End of September. You'd have your September meeting.
Our September meeting, so if we decided not to make a decision tonight.
I'm on-
What?
My comment, we can-
Yeah.
I'm, I'm on the fence.
Yeah.
I couldn't, if you asked me to make a decision tonight, I couldn't. If I'd be forced to, then I would, but-
Well, I think it's important that we talk about it.
Yeah. I'm on the fence. I mean, I'm a small business owner in town. I own two commercial properties and I own my own business. And I know how hard it is to utilize properties that you own. And you've had this property for a long time, and you all live there. It's the biggest eyesore at your end of town. And when you bought there, you knew you were buying in an industrial-zoned region, too. So a little bit of buyer beware here. But I also understand not wanting to have a gas station in your backyard, too. So I'm, I'm 50/50. If I lived there, I probably wouldn't want it either. But as a business owner, I'd be pushing for it just as well. So I just am not ready to make a decision on this.
You know, from what I think I heard, the property, the Pool Barn, has been used for so many things that almost anything you wanted to do there is grandfathered, except to have a gas station. And the inland wetlands people said that they really couldn't deny it, that it's not over the aquifer. They're doing what they have been asked to do and more, as far as protecting the environment from leakage. So I think it's something that everybody here is against, but I don't think we have a reason to use that as the reason to deny it. I'm concerned about the P A D use. I'm not so sure that residential in there makes sense, but I'm not the owner.
Right.
And I'm not risking my money. He is, and, and he should have property rights to be able to do that. So I'm, I'm finding it hard to vote against it.
Okay. Mike? Comments, or?
I'm just as much on the fence as one is. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Jerry?
I'm not prepared to vote either. There's just too much information to consider. I do have to tell you, I was quite surprised because it was going to be a 24-hour gas station. I'm not sure if that's a good fit, especially for a residential area. So you may want to think about that. And I don't think enough information has been presented about the barn. I support the business development, but it seems like alls we've been talking about is a gas station, gas station, gas station. I'd like to see some more tangibles on where this barn's going to go. I don't want to see the barn fall beside after the gas station gets opened up, so.
There was a presentation two weeks ago about the design of the building, but, but you're right, there's, in terms of tenants-
It could be, it could be residential upstairs, but may not be if we don't, you know. So we really don't have any insurance of what it's going to be, or is it going to revert back to what it was, an empty barn with some landscaping around it. There is a lot of parking lot there, too. I do agree with somebody about the open space. I think we're really grabbing every single piece of, inch of property there. So I'd like to see maybe something done about that, but I have to look at the other facts. So I'm not prepared to vote.
Kevin?
Okay. Well, I served on design review at the time when we were reviewing the P A D proposal. And I don't think this is exactly what we had planned when we considered P A D proposals that referred to testimony that it was designed to be, if you look at the intent, purpose to establish for, you know, encourage mixed use for innovative development, we heard that. Encourage master plans to create attractive, livable, environmentally wholesome, and industrially friendly. I don't think it meets the desire of the P A D. It's not a right to have a P A D put in. You know, you don't have the right to switch over. And I think the town should get something back and forth doing a change in the zoning, and I don't think the proposal that we have does that. That, and we also, you know, the planning commission has already expressed that, you know, they don't see that it meets the plan for, the intent and desire for P A D. Otherwise, you're doing spot zoning. You just put it in a place without extracting some value for the town.
I'm not sure I understand the, the value for the town from the... What, what, I don't quite understand what you're saying.
I don't think the trade-off to the town is worth making a zone change.
Okay. Ned?
I haven't bought gas in town in over 10 years, okay? Sometimes I go up to the Cumberland Farms in Granby. So I'm not opposed to a moderately priced gas station in town.
But I'm not-
Another comment is that the open space is one amenity, but public restrooms off the trail, at least to us older guys with bad prostates, has a definite value for people traveling through. So, you know, it's, it's different from open space, but I think it's valuable. I agree with Kevin that the, it doesn't look like what everybody thought a P A D would look like when we were going through all those discussions. But there's also the statement that it had to be a creative thing, and this certainly is creatively different from what we anticipated. So I think it's hard to decide. I mean, I'm sounding like I'm for it, but I really am more on the fence than, than not.
Well, it sounds like we're not going to make a decision tonight, so that, that probably isn't satisfactory to the applicant or to those who oppose the application, but I think it's the right thing to allow this to sink in a little bit, give my comments of sort of where I am. I'm, I'm equally, you know, not firmly one way or the other. I think that I have a great deal of respect for what Mr. Evans has done in town, especially across the street. I don't know if anybody remembers what the Wasabi restaurant looked like before it got torn down, but it was, it's a huge improvement. And so I think the effort to improve that property is, is attractive. It's hard to ignore the magnitude and intensity of the neighbors' response, and it's certainly been heard by all of us. been heard by all of us. But on its, on it, I think ultimately the challenge for the zoning commission is to look at the property and see what's an appropriate use for it in the context of the town. And some of the issues that are raised are important, and some of them are reasons to not do it if you're against it, or reasons to do it if you're for it, and not necessarily, so you don't, all of those points don't necessarily weigh equally in, in a decision that we will ultimately have to make. Mr. Evans has the right to develop the property. I think the, the question is, you know, can we make this happen in a way that makes everybody happy? No, we can't. But can we do it in a way that is right for the town of Simsbury? And that's the challenge that we as commissioners have. And I think, you know, we will individually think about this, we will not collectively think about that. We'll do that at our next meeting in September. And to the extent that we have questions, can we do anything about that, Hiram?
You can ask me.
Direct, direct them through.
If there's a town engineer question, I'm happy to talk to you.
Yeah.
Another question. If, what would he have to do with that property to develop, redevelop the Pool Barn with his Cumberland Farms without using a PAD? He's in a...
Could you speak up just a little bit, please?
I asked the question what...
What's a permitted use? It would only, it would require a zone change?
What would he have to do to put in the Cumberland Farms and redo his Pool Barn for offices and retail if he couldn't do residential? Could he do something without PAD?
It would still be a zone change. It would still be a zone change.
A zone change?
Because it's industrial. Right now, it's industrial, and so it, you know...
Our gas station is industrial?
They're not allowed in our industrial zone. It has to be, it is a zone.
A machine, a manufacturing plant could go in there. Next, correct or not?
That's one of the things about, I think the applicant referred to in the beginning of their presentation, is that a number of things have taken place in that study over the years. And so whether they would continue to maintain that those uses continue to reside there, I think there was, there was some discussion about manufacturing, there was sales, there was auto sale there.
Repair.
There was actually auto repair there, that's right. The only thing is the pumps, this whole process, I mean, they could repair, they could set up a garage there, they could do manufacturing there. And frankly, you know, some of those things could be great, they could be beautiful, or they could be a lot worse than, than, you know, folks that live nearby might want to see them.
So if this was a tune-up, drive-through tune-up lube shop, that would be allowed?
That's currently been there before, and I think the argument would probably be made that could be established there very quickly for the zone improvement. Little change.
Retail, though? Not, retail would not be allowed?
Retail is allowed. Yep, Pool Barn was retail. So some of the choices...
Everything but a gas station basis.
It's a special permit. The gas station requires a special permit. That's correct.
It has to be allowed under the regulations. It's not, without a zone change, it's not allowed, as current regulations say. As weird as that sounds, you know, it, it, that's the way it currently reads.
There's no place you could put a gas station in town.
I'm sorry, Ned?
There's no place you could put a gas station in town.
Not below a special permit.
Without going through this process.
I think the applicant went through that, that sort of scenario last time where they ran down through it, either whether it was because it was an aquifer, because of its proximity to a church or an educational institution or whatever, the current ones...
But it met all of those, you wouldn't need to come to the zoning commission to be approved if it met all of those requirements. Is that correct?
That's, you'd still have to probably get a special permit.
Right.
Because it's a gas station.
That's the point, okay. Hiram, a question about the text amendment. If we were to recommend a different approach to the text amendment, we can do that as a commission to solve the issue, or does, this is like the second time that someone's brought us a text amendment to, I'm thinking back to the horse thing a year ago.
Yeah.
And so the question is, could we propose a text amendment for our zoning regs that would address either just this property or the reg in, in total?
I'd really have to be careful how I answer that, Mr. Chairman. I think that if, if it just had to do, the text amendment had to do with the distance from the religious institution, I think it would depend on how that's worded and whether that change was significantly different than what's been proposed or not. It, it could be slightly different and still accomplish the same thing, but if it's significantly different and had potential to impact...
We'd need another public hearing.
I would think so, yeah. I'd want to be careful and to see exactly what it was before, and then run that by town attorney before we did that.
All right.
So for example, his suggestion in his letter, would that be sufficiently variable or different?
That's part of the application at this point. So that would be right on.
Because it was on the record during the public hearing. And in terms of some of the operating things that you've potentially suggested we could talk about if we got to a decision point, those are things that, that we as a commission could implement as conditions of the application.
That's correct. Yeah, modifications.
Hours of operation, public address systems.
Lighting, noise, so on, yes.
Ingress and egress.
Restroom signs on the...
Restroom signs on the pathway.
For me. The big arrow for Dave.
For Dave.
All right. All right, so we will not take action tonight, and we will continue this application for our next meeting. And I can't emphasize enough how much we appreciate everyone's participation. This is what democracy's all about. Doesn't make it any easier on us, but it's, that's what it's all about.
So there's no, no meeting scheduled in the beginning of September at the present time, Mr. Chairman. However, if the commission decided to have a special meeting, we'd notice it and make sure that everyone knew about that as well, so.
And we do not have to have it on a Monday night, so if we wanted to have a meeting Thursday night, we could do that.
That's correct. We just have to properly notice it.
Did we approve the minutes of the last two meetings earlier in the meeting?
Yes, we did.
I thought we only did one.
Oh.
That's all right.
We can do that.
Pretend.
I just don't remember it, but then, no, we talked about...
Two hours.
It's a long time for me. Specifically, specifically, we did the, the most recent meeting, the July 7th meeting.
There was a June in the package, I just thought maybe...
I'm not sure why that was in there.
They were in, well, there was a June 24th meeting minutes in there. Those were our planning minutes, I believe?
No, they were, they were zoning meeting, I mean, I don't believe the minutes were ready for the...
The 16th meeting, 16th.
Okay.
There's also the July 7th.
We approved July 7th.
Anybody have any comments on the June 16th meeting? I recommend that we approve those.
We approved them last time.
Yeah, I thought so.
Mm-hmm.
We're good. Yeah.
To the July 7th.
All right. Hiram, what else do we need to do tonight?
Two quick things, Mr. Chairman, just under informational items. The last meeting, the commission approved the Form-Based Code for the Hartford property, and there were two, two changes, two revisions to that, that I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear on. Section 7.0C1, and the wording was this, "The Hartford North District shall consist of at least," in the way the text read at that time, "one of the following four distinct components." And the change there was that the commission wanted to require at least two uses. So that, that change was made and is clear in, in the new reg. I have also confirmed this with a consultant with Gateway, and what this means is that any proposal which does not meet the standard automatically becomes a type 4 application, so therefore will go to public hearing, I think as was suggested by Mr. Ryan. So the other part to that was, the second revision was this, under section 5.0D4, and this is adding a section D to that regulation, "to require public hearing on any application to ensure its compatibility with stated and adopted code standards." So that would require, allow you to take to public hearing any of those applications that you wanted to, even a type 1 if you wanted to, although that's going to be a minimal change. So that was the wording that I recommended that I have. I believe this embodies what the commission meant when it adopted that particular revision. So those were the two changes that I'm, I want to make sure that everyone's clear on, that you can take the, any, any application you want to, to a public hearing, make sure that it meets the set standards, and then the other one was to require at least two of the four distinct component zones.
So I'll just say that, Hiram ran this by me, I think that this language about the public hearings is stronger than what we originally talked about. We talked about permitting public hearings as opposed to requiring, but I think that it's not bad to start with that language. I think we should be aware that the Hartford is probably not happy with that, because it basically puts almost every application into the process that we, you know, spent two or three hours on tonight, so.
I can tell you that I...
Applications coming through, though.
Did have a meeting with them late last week, and I think the chairman's portrayal is correct, not that that has to impact the commission's decision at all, but that's, that was the wording that I thought would work well for everyone. The other thing that we need to do this evening is that we need to set the effective date for this regulation, which we didn't do last time. And I would recommend that we set the effective date as of August 1st, 2014. So we'll notice that, make sure that that becomes the effective date. So if that's...
So if they come in with an all-residential offer before that, we're...
We're astute.
Actually, with that amendment, even though we said two, does it need to be a percentage thing? I know on the, on the south parcel, it says, you know, like a 50% or something, so...
It's at least two, though, Kev.
Yeah, I know, but does it, but two means 99% residential.
So they just add one gas station and then they're good to go?
They're good to go. That's what I'm questioning, you know, whether there has to be a...
You know, I, that's a good question, but I think that what happens is that we would take a look at that and compare that with the, with the, with the plans that were set out, those, those graphic representations that were set out.
If it's materially...
And if something is far off from those things, you're going to see it, and it's going to go to hearing, no questions. I mean...
It's a way to catch it. It's going to, right?
There, there's a lot. I mean, I think that the public needs to understand, you know, the Form-Based Code is, is great for the developer because they can say, okay, this is what we need to do. On the other hand, there's a tremendous amount of sort of constraints built into that and with regard to the form and what it looks like. And so that's, that's the give and take there, and that's what, it's not always easy to get a new sign or whatever you need to do, but it, the idea is to try to put some predictability in the regulation, too, so.
All right.
So if that's, if that's okay with the commission, I, those things would be most appreciated.
Let's go with that language and...
Then we'll accept the language and make it effective, August 1st.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Last thing, and this is just an informational item, is that someone, one of the business people in the center of town recently brought in their topic, which comes up, oh, every week, about parking, pool parking and shared parking in the center of town and what an issue that is. And they brought a whole series of pictures about how people have, you know, my tenants' parking-only signs all over the place. This is going to be a fairly big issue and a fairly complicated issue. What I'll do in the next month, in August, is put together a little bit of a study about this and bring it to you in September. I think we need to have all the business people sit down and talk about this and how we're going to work with this in the future, how we're going to deal with it.
Is this really about restaurants, mostly?
Restaurants, but also office buildings, you know, for example, the former Simsbury Bank building in that corner, things like that.
We had a Simsbury Center Zone, or whatever you might call it, parking thing, and every developer that came in would not have enough parking on his property. So he would show you the guys next door and the guy next door and say, we're all sharing the property. And then the property changed its hands, and the new guy says, I'm not sharing it anymore, you know, and he can't.
Exactly, right. And that's what we...
I parked there and I defy them to give me a ticket, because I want to take them to court, but they won't.
You're that kind of guy, Ned?
Yes.
Jimmy Gallagher knows. Gallagher knows.
All right, so this is, this is coming up when?
September.
September, October?
Yeah. So I promised them that I would bring that to the commission's attention, but just that, we'll give it some serious attention in the meantime, because it is an issue the downtown merchants are concerned with.
It may take some research to back it, a lot of these...
Absolutely, yeah.
...applications that we had over the years in the center.
Just some questions, real quick, big Y.
Yes. I do, I actually, the meeting we had with them about a week ago indicates that everything is still on track. We expect the closing to take place in August. They expect to start doing groundwork in September. They'll be open a year from that.
Okay. Curaleaf, are they up and opening, Curaleaf?
The fence is up, the security is in place, the zoning certificate has been signed off on, and as far as we know, they're ready to begin operation.
Nobody came to those public hearings.
None came to the dope-smoking ones, but...
They have more people for horses and gas stations.
Horses and gas stations.
That was my thought, I was thinking, yeah.
All right.
Turn the Pool Barn into another Curaleaf.
Second.
Nobody would say a word.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.